Good evening. I would like to call the bring to March sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Boyle?
Here.
Mr. Chavone?
Here.
Mr. McGarvey?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Eckert?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mr. Burns, could we have the invocation and the pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interbarrow School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name, amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now hear reports from our student representatives, Abby Marola and Katie Recever.
The one hundredth day celebration had a great turnout. Family and friends gathered in the gym to watch the kindergarten academy students march and flaunt their hats and vests, thanks to all the parents and guardians who helped the students with their wonderful creations. Thanks to your generosity, over two hundred canned food items were collected over one hundredth day. Classes lined up the items and counted. The loaves and fishes pantry will be grateful for the donations.
At Norwood School on February fourth, the second graders went to the Walnut Street Theater to see the Valentine's musical Zombies in Love. On February sixteenth, we held our bingo night. Raffle baskets donated by faculty and vendors were prizes. A good time was had by all. On February twenty ninth, the first graders went to the Urban Theater to see the play A Sop's Fable.
Prospect Park Schools showed their generosity this month through two fundraisers. Coordinated through the high school, students and staff purchased three hundred and fifty pairs of mismatched socks for National Down Syndrome Awareness Day and raised over twenty-five-hundred dollars in one month to purchase materials needed to build a ball pit, thanks to thirty-two generous donors in the community. Earlier this month, the eighth grade class traveled to the nation's capital to visit the Holocaust Museum.
At Norwood School, on February twelfth, we had our Me and My God Dance. Thank you to everyone who attended. On February twenty ninth, we held our elementary Positive Behavior Assembly, which included a Wii bowling reward. Read Across America in celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday was held on March second. Grades one through five had the opportunity to create their favorite storybook character.
On March fourth, Tencum students Gianna Taylor and Gabby Fetters attended the PMEA Seventh and Eighth Grade District Twelve Music Festival hosted at E.T. Richardson Middle School. We look forward to Interboro hosting the event next year. In February, students were challenged to earn three thousand expectation tickets. On March second, they earned over four hun- uh, four thousand tickets, and Mr. Fanning read Ice Cream King and celebrated Reading Across America by becoming a Sunday himself. Pictures are on our website. On April thirtieth, from eleven to two P.M., we will be hosting a fiftieth anniversary celebration for all those who have called Tencum School home. Check the website for additional information as the date approaches.
At the high school on February eleventh, congratulations to the twenty sixteen Dancing With the Teachers Champions, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Webb, Jeff Finley, Nick France, and Billy Kettler. Thank you to all the participants. On February sixteenth, the winter, the boys' winter track team had a great meet at Delco Championships at Glenn Mills. Senior Mike Chamberlain set a new school record in winning a pole vault at thirteen feet, six, and one and a half inches. This puts the seasonal total at sixty-six medals for the winter, a new school record. The Frasht Dance was held on February twenty-sixth. We had over three hundred and ten students, students attend. Everyone looked magnificent. Mini-thon is this Friday from five to twelve A.M. We will be taking donations at the door the night of. Thank you in advance. This concludes our report.
Thank you. I always forget you guys can be excused after the committee reports. There is no recognition this evening. Mr. Burns, public comments?
We have two individuals, Pat Quinn and Phyllis Floyd. Pat Quinn?
Good evening, School Board and Bernardette Riley. My name is Pat Quinn. I'm a resident of Prospect Park, and I'm the commissioner of the Delco Boys Basketball League. I'm here tonight to thank the school board, the school district, Bernardette Riley, George Walhoff, and his entire staff, operations, and facilities for the work they do in our school district and sharing their school district with our basketball league. Want to mention that not just the boys' basketball league, which includes fifteen communities, five school districts, I've been to all the school districts, thousands of games, and I have to say that this school district is the most welcoming of all the school districts in our, our league. Not only do we have the boys' basketball here, but we also have two girls' leagues that play here as well as soccer program. And again, the facilities folks under George, doors are always open on time, the facilities people always work with us, polite, welcoming. It's just a tremendous, tremendous outpouring of what this school district is about. And we'll quickly, I'd just like to mention a couple things about the basketball league. Again, we have fifteen communities. Roughly, we have eighteen hundred kids, one hundred and twenty basketball teams from the age of seven to seventeen, grade schools and high schools. And, you know, the purpose of any sport, of course, is to give the kids a safe place to play, teach good sportsmanship, let the kids meet each other, form teams, and just have a good old time. And again, that's what this league is about. We really push good sportsmanship, and I'll share one quick story and let the next person speak. This, actually, two things. One is, I'd like to commend that Norwood at Christmas time opened up their doorwards thanks to the school district to have a tournament, that all the communities were involved in. And I was at many of the games, and I have to tell you again that these kids were kept busy at Christmas time, they were kept active, they had fun, and this school district was the one that opened their doors. It just, you know, it was tremendous. And secondly, I'd like to mention that, and this is also about Norwood, recently, we had a game between Cowlingdale and Norwood. Cowlingdale had put an autistic child on one of their teams, and that in itself was amazing that a, that a community would do that because sports is about winning and losing. We all know that. I mean, everybody probably heard the story about the Bucks County high school coach who headbutted a ref a couple months ago. Unfortunately, sportsmanship doesn't always win with sports. Well, in this case, Norwood was playing Cowlingdale, and Norwood was down one point at the end of the game. The Cowlingdale team lost the ball, and Norwood picked up the ball, started running down to the other side to make a layup and possibly win the game, and Norwood's eleven, twelve-year-old boy turned and gave the ball to this Cowlingdale autistic child, let him shoot. The kid missed a shot. Another Norwood child turned and gave him the ball again and encouraged him to shoot again. The upside of the story is that the Cowlingdale kid didn't make the point, but Cowlingdale won, and Norwood, even though they lost, showed tremendous sportsmanship that resonated throughout the whole league. And that's the importance of Interboro School District and what we talk about, pride and everything else. So again, I just want to thank everybody, and again, George and his team. Everybody have a great night. One last thing is, I'm off to the last game of this league. We're playing over at Enberg Admin Center, so we started at the admin and we're finishing at the admin. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. I take it back, there was recognition tonight. Appreciate that. Next, Mike?
And Ms. Floyd?
Phyllis Floyd, six oh four Fourteenth Avenue, Prospect Park. In going over the agenda, I noticed that there is a motion for Johnson Control to go ahead with the HABAC installation for administration and the kindergarten academy. And I'm hoping that after the work session, that everybody, no one has changed their bond, and they go through with this because it's not, a lot of the comments were air conditioning, air conditioning, air conditioning. It's not about air condi- air conditioning the buildings. It's mechanical. It's a mechanical issue, and if it's not addressed, it, it's going to cost more than what is listed here, as it was explained by Johnson Control people. And the fact is, is that it's also a health and safety concern, too. And that was explained about the air quality control that when you have room air conditioners and how it's not working right or it's not efficient. And speaking of efficiency, it's sad when you see office workers with coats on on one side of the building because they're freezing, and on the other side of the building, they're so hot that the windows are open. And it's just, it's just something that needs to be addressed, and I'm glad it's being addressed tonight, and hopefully it'll be approved. The other thing I wanted to ask was, I brought up about when I was still on the board, but after I came off the board, I had asked about somebody reaching out and finding out how corrections, if necessary, can be made pertaining to how our schools are rated with the realty world because people are shunning away from buying in the Interbarrow School District because we are rated low and below some other neighboring schools that used to be below us. And because of our scores, supposedly, this is why. Now, we had a presentation last night. I would like to have a copy of that, if that's possible, explaining the percentages and whatnot. And what I got out of it was the percentages that were given were of the kids that took the test. What about the kids that didn't take the test? How much, that's the Keystone Test. So it's like there's preparation, remediation, retesting, redi- yeah, remediation. So it was encouraging that this percentage of kids are doing better, but what's the overall for the whole group that needs to take this test? And going back to the real estate aspect, I know some of you, before you came on the board, you heard from people when you were campaigning about, you know, concern. The value of our homes are going to go down if they haven't already, not so much because of the economy, but because of this rating. Someone was supposed to look into this to find out how they come up with this rating and what can be done to rectify it if, in fact, we're not as low as what is being stated. I'm a homeowner. I put a lot of money into my house to improve it as others in the, in the district, and it will really be a shame that, you know, we're not going to get our money's worth out of our homes. And this needs to be looked into, and the scores need to be improved even more so. And if I can get some kind of an idea of the overall percentages, because I don't know if the board got that or not, that was just the kids that took the test or retook it. And we need to know what everybody is doing. So with that said, if I could be notified as to how I can get that information, that presentation, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. My time's up.
Thank you, Ms. Floyd. Mr. Burns, can we move on to motion five?
Motion for minutes, five point one. Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on February seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen be approved.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, or I'm sorry, solicitors report. Ms. Serini?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. This month, our office has been consulting in the areas of pupil services issues, contract review, and I also have been providing special education in servicing across the district schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Serini. Mr. Burns, motion number seven, please.
Motion number seven, financial, seven point one. Motion that the attached treasures report for the month ending February twenty ninth, two thousand and sixteen be approved.
Second.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion seven point two. Motion that the funds dis- dispersments in the amount of four million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents be approved.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion?
Motion seven point three, that the attached budget transfers for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Correspondence, Mr. Burns?
No correspondence, Mr. Phelps.
Okay. Move on to committee reports. Mr. Evans, you're up first.
Thank you. Our finance committee, a meeting was held on March first, two thousand and sixteen. The meeting was commenced at six eleven. Mr. High School presented the committee with a preliminary budget update. Mr. High School and Superintendent Riley committed to continuing an investigation into the line item budget to see what further reductions were available. Budgets for the schools have been completed with little room for savings. Mr. High School pointed out that benefits cost has risen from nine point five to twelve percent, and the piers retirement costs are up from twenty-nine point two to thirty point oh three percent. Delaware County intermediate unit costs are up thirty-one thousand dollars. Operating costs for the DCTS are up eighty-six thousand dollars, while there was a reduction of sixty-two thousand in the special ed budget. Mr. High School also provided a summary of committed fund balance major projects, pointing out that some have been completed, some are ongoing, and with the projected shortfall, others may have to be deferred. Mr. High School also provided financial statements current as of February twenty ninth, two thousand and sixteen. The finance committee agreed that every continuing effort should be undertaken to find additional reductions and that the board would not pursue an increase higher than the state allowed index. Mr. McGarvey also requested that a copy of the line item budget be provided to the board directors. There was, again, discussion from other board members regarding the PA State contribution, early retirement savings opportunities, and the deferral of some capital projects. Board members also asked if proposed expenditures can be broken out to show which are fixed costs and which may be, may be negotiable. There were questions from board members regarding technology costs and concerns over whether any department had overspent their approved budget, and the meeting was adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Nine point two, GBO meeting, Mr. Eckert?
The GBO meeting was held immediately after the finance committee. All members were present. There was a presentation on the Johnson Control Project for Phase Three, which is the kindergarten administration building. This is a mechanical upgrade of the building, which includes air conditioning, controls, ducting, and air quality in the school. Prior to the presentation on the kindergarten academy, there was a presentation on the past projects that were done on Phase One and Phase Two, along, again, along with the detail of what was exactly going to happen over the kindergarten academy, and a preliminary overview of the Phase Four project, which is Glenn Olding, which we are hoping and praying that we can be able to pull that off again and keep, continue on track with the Phase Four next year. After the presentation of Johnson Control, there was a presentation by Baird for the financing of the project. This will add significant money to the budget, but it's coming. But as it was stated earlier, in the other projects, it is something that needs to be done. The systems are old, they are due for an upgrade. And again, this will add life to the buildings, and we'll start to see energy savings, as well as maintenance costs will drop along with it, as well as the comfort level of the students in the building. There was also a short discussion on the high school signage discussion, which has been going back and forth at the present moment. We are going to hold off on that sign until we can get through the budget process and reexamine that project at a later date. Again, the Johnson Control Project is on the agenda tonight, so we are in a tight schedule to get that done. Johnson has come through remarkably well with flying colors on the first two phases with job outstanding. The buildings opened up on time, and they were ready for school. With that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Nine point three, Mr. Burns, legislative update?
I put my foot in my mouth last night when I said there was no legislative activity because this afternoon, I'm sorry, yeah, we ju- the Senate passed a thirty billion-dollar budget bill. But just before you get your hopes up, it was a thirty-one to eighteen vote, thirty Republicans, one Democrat from Chester County. Governor Wolf immediately responded, saying he's most likely going to veto it. And this is kind of what's been going on throughout. The Senate tends to have the larger bill, and then the House has a little bit more of a conservative bill in terms of spending. So it was to go to the House around three o'clock this afternoon. I wasn't able to get an update, unfortunately, due to the scheduling of this meeting tonight and a previous meeting, but there is some movement where I did not think there'd be anything for this evening. And just to highlight, I had mentioned some litigation that was ongoing from other districts. There was also a, on March ninth and on March tenth, the Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania School Boards Association filed an application for special relief in the Commonwealth Court. They were looking to have the, the state pay districts immediately for the amounts that should have been dispersed on February twenty-fifth. So we kind of have now two cases that are ongoing, one that has to work itself through the legal process, and now this second case, which has been filed directly in Commonwealth Court. So we'll keep tracking both of these, and hopefully I can provide you updates, but I'm happy to be able to at least give you a little bit of a report tonight when, last evening, I did not think we'd have anything, so. concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Nine point four, Delaware County Community College, Mr. Chavone?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. There was not a meeting within the last month. Our next meeting is scheduled for March thirtieth, so I will update the board at the April meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavone. Nine point five, Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Mr. Harris?
Good evening, everyone. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on March second. It was approved to conduct a PSSA Science Hand Scoring Half-Day Workshop, February twenty-fourth, at Radnor Township. Approved a professional development to provide training to the school district of Philadelphia. Also approved the two, twenty sixteen-seventeen Intermediate Unit General Operational Budget. Also approved was a twenty sixteen-seventeen Special Ed Education Budget. Approved in agreement with Marple Township to install, own, and maintain two flashing warning lights at the Marple Education Center. Approved the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen Delaware County Technical Schools Budget. For more information, news, and happenings, go to DCIU.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Mr. Burns, moving on to motion ten?
Motion ten, personnel, ten point one through ten point six, the following motions, actions be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, please, Mr. Burns?
Number eleven, Office of Curriculum and Instruction. Motion that the following items be approved, eleven point one.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number twelve, Office of Special Education and Pupil Services. Motion that the following items be approved, twelve point one.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion?
Number thirteen, Office of Facilities. Motion that the following items be approved, thirteen point one.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
And Mr. Eckert?
In my report, I failed to mention the cost, and I don't want people to think that I, I failed to mention it. The cost of the project is estimated at six point one million dollars for the kindergarten academy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number fourteen, which will require a roll call. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the Interbarrow High School Program of Studies book for the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school year.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Next motion, or I'm sorry, motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number fifteen, which will requir, we require a roll call. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the general operating budget of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit for the fiscal year of July first, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of eight million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Interbarrow School District share is thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and one dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could you do a roll call on this as well?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Motion number sixteen, which will require a roll call. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the general operating budget, the Delaware County Area Vocational Technical School for the fiscal year July first, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of twelve million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, six dollars. Interbarrow School District share is nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could you do a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion, Mr. Burns?
Final motion, number seventeen. This will require a roll call. Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Special Education Funding and Service Agreement for two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. Interbarrow School District's cost, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and two dollars.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Ms. Caldwell, could you do a roll call on this, please?
Ms. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Chavone?
Yes.
Mr. McGarvey?
Yes.
Mrs. De Batista?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Eckert?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Hearing none. Is there any new business? Is your superintendent?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Inverboro School District is a host site in Delaware County for their Strategic National Stockpile, or SNS, which serves our four communities in case of a disaster. This is a federally managed volunteer system utilizing community members to assist in providing medication, medical supplies, and medical equipment in response to any type of disaster that might occur. Inverboro, we are currently looking for community members who would be interested in volunteering their time. If you would like information or are interested in volunteering, please take a flyer off the back table or visit our website for further information. This Friday, the high school will host a Four Diamonds Mini-Thon, beginning at five and ending at twelve a.m. The high school has set a goal to raise ten thousand dollars, and so far, approximately sixty-seven thousand, sixty-seven hundred, excuse me, has been raised for pediatric cancer. If you would like to make a donation and support the cause, there is a link from the district website that will take you right to the high school's webpage. I just want to add that I know the students are very excited. They've put a lot of time into this, and I know it's going to be a great success. So we're all looking forward to hearing how it goes. I received some news today that Inverboro has two winners in the Delaware County Young Authors Contest. They are seventh grader Denise Hackber Diva from Prospect Park School in Ms. Artisa's class, and sixth grader Emily Donnelly from Tinnicum in Ms. Kichudi's class. I'd like to congratulate these two young ladies and teachers on their outstanding writing and being the recipients of these, of the winners of the contest. And finally, I would like to wish everybody a restful spring break, which starts Friday afternoon, and we return on Tuesday. I believe it's March twenty-ninth. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Comment?
Mr. Evans?
Just wanted to take a minute to point out some of the highlights of our school district. We do talk about everything bad that's gone on, and troublesome or dramatic. But we also have to focus, need to focus on some of the positive things that are always happening on a daily basis in around our school district. Start with, we had physical Olympics at Henderson High School this past weekend. Inverboro participated in another round and had a great showing, placing fourth in the day's events. The marching band went to Universal Studios. Band once again represented Inverboro to World Travelers. They also visited Eastern Florida State College, where they heard from a retired NASA engineer regarding the importance of continued learning and the contribution of technology. They also saw a planetarium show about the universe, as well as viewing Jupiter and the moon through EFC's Observatory. So there was a pretty good educational component attached to that trip as well. We now have a bocce team. I don't, I apologize, I don't have all the stats on that team, but I know they're doing well from the, from the school's website. The Jazz Festival, more nights of soothing jazz performed by our high school students in and around the county. Last Friday, we were at Lower Murray. Wrestling team is doing great things. Lacrosse, track, and baseball have all started up. The Language Festival was well-attended, showcasing food, culture, and architecture from around the world. College and Career Night, also well-received and well-attended, a clear indication that our district is doing its best to prepare our students for their next steps. They had the Alumni Show last Friday or Saturday night, the NOPE program about prescription drug addiction and awareness. The choir went to Harrisburg. The middle school band students went to DC, where they, they listened and sat in on the rehearsal of the Air Force Band, and talked with some of the soldier musicians that were being deployed to war-torn countries around the world. And then they visited Arlington Cemetery to witness the changing of the guard for the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, as well as John F. Kennedy's eternal flame. Mini-Thon, as the superintendent has pointed it out, there's so many good things going on in our district, every single day, every single week, and I just think we need to focus and celebrate it. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the administration, board members, and especially the community for allowing me to attend last month's meeting telephonically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Anyone else?
Comment?
Mr. Chivon?
I just wanted to congratulate Prospect Park for winning the Battle of the Borough Dodgeball Tournament last week. And I wanted to thank the teachers and staff for also participating. It was very well-attended, and I enjoyed my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chivon.
Comment?
Mr. Harris?
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Chivon on his wedding. He's now married. He's joining the ranks. Congratulations, Justin.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else?
Mr. President?
Yeah, yes.
Motion number fourteen, it was actually the shortest motion tonight to be read, but I actually believe there was probably, besides the, the air conditioning project, it was probably the most work put in on tonight's agenda item for the future of the high school and the classes. I'd like to thank the high school administration and the, the key administrators in putting together the new classes and the presentation. It was, it was very well-done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. I was going to do that myself. I'm glad you beat me to it. It was a great presentation from Mr. Johnson, Mr. Conti, Mr. Snyder. He's did a great job, very enthusiastic with the new programs. It, not necessarily new, just revamped, appealing to children in different ways, that hasn't done, done that style before. So I think it's a great, great thing for us. Hearing none, nothing else. Meeting's adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry. On Tuesday, April fifth, I can't wait to get out of here, two thousand and sixteen Finance Committee meeting with the GBO meeting immediately following will be held at six p.m. in the boardroom of the administration building. The next work session of the Inverboro School Board Directors will be conveyed in the boardroom of the administration building on Tuesday, April nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, at six thirty p.m. And the next regular monthly public meeting at the Inverboro Board of School Directors will be conveyed in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday, April twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, at seven p.m. Thank you all for coming. Meeting adjourned.